I'd like to call the meeting to order. Stand please for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Turn forward. Superintendent Pope's side.
As most of you all know, yesterday we lost a member of our school community. So if you would join me in just a moment of silence in his remembrance, please. The student was Cameron Williamson. Thank you very much.
Okay, first item of business is approval of minutes. We'll read for page 1817, meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes is presented?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say the same aye.
Aye.
Opposed or none. Confirmation of claims, confirmation and approval of claims.
We have total claims this month, eight hundred eighty-one thousand, thirty-six dollars and sixty-three cents. Out of that number, our Fund One total was a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and seven dollars and three cents. Last year, at the same pay period, we were at a hundred and forty-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-one, eighty-two. So for a difference of thirteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five, twenty-one, that we paid more this year. Few items to share with you that show the increase, why there is an increase. Our workers' compensation payment was eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-three, seventy-six this year. As you know, I've shared with you, that number is slowly increasing. We had purchase made from extreme mobility for right at forty-two hundred dollars for special equipment. And by the way, we will be reimbursed for that piece of equipment through the Special Education Medicare Fund. We did purchase a scrubber for the cleaning department of four thousand, five hundred dollars. Our KISBIT payment, basically which is due to timing, it's a normal payment of twenty-three thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars and fifty-five cents. So those are some things that were more at this time, probably made that number a little bit higher. We'd like to call your attention, I did have one question concerning, if you go to page twenty-two of your claims report, someone can help me, that gets there first, can tell us the page it is on your electronic document.
Twenty-seven, maybe.
That's right.
Twenty-seven?
Mm-hmm.
One thing we did want to explain, it was pointed out that you'll notice it under forty-five, six seventy-two, Munis Code, three eight eight, out to the side there. LG and G, LG and E payment, you notice there are five of those for the exact amount of thousand fifty-eight, eighty-five, which seemed a little peculiar, and it is, but when we checked on that, basically what they do, they lock, there's one meter that feeds the five areas, food service and then the four schools. And there's one meter, and so then it's basically just divided out equally, so each building has an amount. So wanted to give you a clarification on why those would be the same. Our total debt service this month is three hundred and twenty-six thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars and twenty-two cents, and those will be paid on our two bond series. That's principal and interest this month that we're paying. Any questions concerning our claims, any other item?
Do I hear a motion to approve the claims is presented?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say the same aye.
Aye.
Opposed or none. Financial report.
We have received our award notification for this year's flexible focus funds. Just to remind you, we have multiple methods of funding, SEEK funding, our local tax, then also we have the flexible focus funds, and of course, there's all kinds of federal programs as well. But federal focus, excuse me, flexible focus deals with care preschool, professional development, instructional resources. We used to know that as textbook learning, that name has been updated due to changing times. And then we have safe school funds that also fall in flexible focus grants. So that number has been released, and we have a total amount this year of eight hundred thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and eighty-six dollars. That's about what we expected. Most of the time, back in the early days, if it were for professional development, you could only spend it on professional development. If it were for extended school, you could only spend it on ESS. They're giving us some flexibility with this, so we can spend this on any one of the focus areas that we see the greatest need on. So we will have some flexibility in that eight hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars there. Delinquent tax sale will take place this Friday, May the nineteenth, at ten a.m. We have three third-party purchasers who are interested in, that have registered to potentially buy. We have forty-one out of seventy-one properties that have not been paid this year, and the revenue that we will collect there at the sale will be forty-one thousand, ninety-one dollars and fifty-two cents. Now, there's twenty-four properties remaining with a balance of sixty-one thousand dollars. And of that amount, one of those properties is forty-eight thousand. So just to keep you updated on that, I want you to think about something. We sent out over sixty-two hundred tax bills, and we're going to have basically twenty-four of those unclaimed, and some of them have actually called and made some arrangements. So this is going to be an exceptional year. What we're doing in the tax office and through the leadership of Ms. Tracy Rogers is exceptional. This is an exceptional year for collection, I can tell you. So we're doing our due diligence as a school district and doing what we need to do to get those, get that revenue in. And I will call to your attention that for delinquent taxpayers from two thousand fifteen, for the years two thousand fifteen and prior, it goes back to two thousand and five, I believe, you can still make claims on those. And we have done an excellent job in reaching back to those folks, and we're just making another effort with those folks, and we've shared with them the potential ramifications of not paying, and we have thirty thousand, nine hundred and six dollars, looks like it's collected since that time, and we've also been able to work with five of those property owners that are working to make payments to rectify that debt. So once again, kudos to Finance Department. Regarding our current construction project with the bus garage relocation, our bonds were released on May the fourth for one million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And with our main contractor there, the BCD, we paid out four hundred and twenty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars and seventy cents thus far. And as you know, in any kind of project like this, we do plan to retain thirty percent of that contract sum, which is about thirty-one thousand dollars, which they're in agreement with and understand. So things are going well. You're going to learn more about the bus garage on down the agenda today. We brought you some photographs. We've just been really pleased with the progress we're making out there, and I think we're going to be on schedule, and I think it's going to be, cross your fingers, I haven't heard the word change of word mentioned once yet, so that's a word we want to stay away from. That's all I have in.
No approval, is it?
No, no, there's no approval.
Okay, the next item is come to be our, one of our favorite parts of the meetings, and today, looks like it's going to be no exception, and that's superintendent's report.
Another great program, another great day for us here. Before I begin with all the good news, you have in your packet a document that includes all of the activities, and if you take a close look at that, there's not very, it's almost daily activities from here on out. So if you're interested in being able to attend any of those, or able to attend any of those, please do so, those activities, I call that to your attention. First of all, today, we do have a rather large group with us today, and this whole group has been extremely successful and going to be even more successful. Some of them will be continuing their experiences even after today. So we're going to start with our future business leaders of America, Mr. Greg Spears is, he's here with us, and Greg, if you'll come on up to the podium there, if you will, and share with us what this group has accomplished, and also what the FBLA group is going to be looking at here in the near future. Mr. Spears?
We have nine students who have made it to the national competition, that I'll be taking them to the end of June, the first of July, it's June twenty-eighth through July second. We'll be attending the National Leadership Conference in Anaheim, California. We'd like to thank the board for helping us with some of the funding and those kind of things as well. But these particular students, I have seven in attendance, a couple of them couldn't make it due to other engagements, but the seven that are with me, I'd like to, for them to stand up and introduce themselves and just let you know what event they placed in and what they placed.
I'm Bethany Mudd, and I placed third in Business Financial Plan.
Christian Cowbert, Publication Design, second place.
Jenna Price, Database Design, second place.
Dana Lopez, third place for spreadsheet applications.
Evan Newsom, FBLA State Vice President, Marketing, second place in the state, Business Financial Plan, third place in the state.
Cole Newton, also was on the marketing team with Evan, and then we got second place.
Wes Thompson, Future Business Leader, first place.
So as you hear, first through third, they actually, the state allows first through fourth, but we didn't have anybody that fell lower than third place. We had a total of seventy-two students this year in our club, that's actually increased from the last couple of years. And out of those, I believe we had close to thirty that attended state conference with us, and about fifty that had attended our regional leadership conference in, earlier in March. So actually, I think it was the end of February, we were the first region. So they've competed twice at this point, and they will be competing for the third time this national level, the end of June, first of July.
Very good. Good job. We'll congratulate all of you in just a moment. Next, we have with us, Mr. Aaron Hunt, our Technology Student Association sponsor, and they've just recently had a state competition that he's going to share with us, what they've accomplished.
Yeah, thank y'all for the opportunity to come speak to you today, and recognize these fine young men and women we have. Yeah, our state conference, Kentucky TSA State Conference, was held April twenty-fourth to the twenty-sixth, Crown Plaza in Louisville. We had fourteen members compete in thirteen different team and individual events. They competed against thirty-four other high schools from across the state, and there were a total of about eight, four hundred and eighty-eight competitors there for these different events. We have, excuse me, we have six competitors that have placed in five different individual or team events at the state level. And they've chosen to show up in their official dress, so when we go compete, they're in their nice blue official TSA dress shirt. So we had a third place for a team in digital video production.
Catherine Malli.
Tiara.
Austin Pete.
And then we had a second place in photographic technology.
Catherine Malli.
We had a second place in computer integrated manufacturing.
Paul Beauty.
Lucas Petit.
A first place in prepared presentation.
Lucas Petit.
Then we have a first place in structural design and engineering, actually, we share a young man with FBLA as well.
Lucas Petit.
Thank you all.
Very good, very good, outstanding. Next, we have with us our Governor's Scholar Students. They will be making a trip this summer, they're not quite sure, of one of three locations in the state, and they'll be going on one of, I think, three different dates as well, possibly. And because they're not sure where they're going, they're not sure exactly what their area will be, but what we're going to do is we're going to have Mr. Pickett to make a presentation here, and we're going to go ahead and give them a standing invitation that they'll come back in August when they finish their competition, and give us a full presentation of what they have accomplished in their summer program at that time. So we're really proud of this group.
Yeah. Just so proud of these three individuals, the others as well, but these three are going off to governor's scholars, and of course, three locations. Just stand up and tell us your name, your focus area, and then afterwards, what you look forward to.
I'm Ellie Penn. We actually have three potential focus areas that we signed up for, so mine are forensic science, behavioral study, and astronomy. And I'm super excited to go for five weeks this summer. Probably what I'm most excited about is just meeting all sorts of new friends, and from all around Kentucky, and being able to bond with them.
My name's Brooke Harden. My three focus areas are political and legal issues, international studies, and Spanish language and culture. The thing that I'm most excited for is the opportunities that we will get after GSP, including scholarships and things like that, but also, like Ellie said, meeting new friends and the experiences that we get to get.
I'm Sarah Luckett, and my focus areas were forensic science, psychology, and political legal issues. And I'm most excited for the knowledge that I'm going to gain and the friends that I'm going to make.
So these three were selected out of a poll, there's about two thousand applicants a year, they get it down to about a thousand. Of course, the governor's office supporting this, this is one of the great things I think the state of Kentucky does, to give this experience to these kids going into their senior year, so very proud of you all.
We want to say this to all of you, thank you so much for representing, first of all, yourself extremely well, but then representing Barstown City Schools like you have. We're so grateful for all that you've accomplished, and those of you that are going on, best of luck in what you accomplish. And again, FBLA will be expecting you to come back with some national hardware hanging around that neck, and looking forward, and TSA, if anything happens this summer, let us know. Would you all stand, please, all of our students that are here? Let's give them a big round of applause. Thank you all so much. We're going to allow you to go back to class at this time.
And if you don't come back and give us a report, we'll take your diplomas away.
Thank you all. Have a great, great day. Appreciate you being here, thank you. We do have one other item in the superintendent's report. Back about the spring of two thousand fifteen, roughly, the foundation, our Barstown Foundation for Excellence, looking for a big project, and what was that big project going to be? And it seems kind of easy that you'd just say, well, we've got some funds set aside, what can we do? I can tell you, it was a very difficult decision to decide what our big project was going to be. It seems simple until you start trying to put it on paper. A committee was formed, several meetings took place, and a decision was made that we would continue on a program that actually the foundation had funded, a STEM program that was, we identified some students, oh, about six or seven times a year, they would do a pull-out and be able to spend a day doing some work. But it was very limited on the number of students that were able to do it. We thought if we could re-expand that program into something bigger. So instead of just the STEM, we extended that, we added the arts to the program, and we created the STEAM Academy. And today, we're very pleased to have with us our gifted and talented coordinator, Ms. Amy Adams, and also our STEAM Academy instructor, Ms. Stephanie Hart. She usually has her lab coat on today, so, but doesn't today, but maybe we should have thought of that. But we're very pleased to have them here. We launched this program in August, at the beginning of this school year, and things have been going fairly well, as far as I know, maybe extremely well, but we have these ladies here today to talk.
We have two parts to our academy, and the first part is the pull-out, where we have fourth through seventh grade qualifying students who come for one full day of instruction. That's a little bit different than the regular classroom. And then the second part is the outreach, where Mrs. Hart goes out into the classroom to all students regardless of ability levels, regardless of race and gender, et cetera. So she's out there with all of the kids. First, we want to thank you and let you know how appreciative we are, because obviously, without the board, we would not have this program at all. So we're very appreciative. And we're going to start with the pull-out, and so some of the accomplishments that we've had so far, each grade level, and so when I say each, I'm talking about fourth, fifth, sixth, and seventh, they have coded, which I know you all have probably heard several times, but they have coded a minimum of nine weeks over the course of the school year. Some of those grade levels have gone a little farther and have advanced through, more advanced curriculum through the coding. Each grade level also completed creativity in engineering challenges each week that they met. The fifth, sixth, and seventh grade used Math Olympiad, which is a very challenging program. It's not something you would ever find in a textbook. It encompasses lots of basic skills that then have to be applied in different ways that they're not used to, so they love that. It was very challenging. The sixth and seventh grade had a machine dissection unit that they did, so we had laptops and CPUs where the kids were taking things apart, seeing how things worked, and how would you ever put that back together. We did receive a grant, the Even Foundation, a family foundation grant, we used that for robotics. We had some really basic robotics, robotics that we, that Stephanie implemented with fifth and sixth? Six and seven. Six and seven. We decided they were a little too basic, so we're going to move those down to a lower grade. And then the VEX robots are much more advanced. In fact, they're so advanced, needed a little more time to make sure we understood completely how to operate them. So those will be implemented next school year. In the outreach portion, we focused, we decided to focus this first year on preschool through second grade. So what she did is each Monday, this year it happened to be a Monday, she would go out into each of those classrooms, all the preschool, all the three-year-olds, all the four-year-olds, K one and two, and she would do a hands-on activity with them. They were mostly focused on engineering. We did have a few science, science experiment type things that we left with some of the older students. Their enthusiasm for science and engineering is crazy. They remember her name, they know she comes in a white coat, she knows that whatever she, whenever she walks in the door, they're going to be doing something. They may not know what it is, but they don't really care. They just know it's fun, they know that they're learning, they're very excited. So we're, we'll talk a little bit more about that here in just a second, but I do want to mention the Tiger Den space that we have over there. I don't know if you've been in there, but when you walk in, there's a room to the left and a room to the right, and they're connected by an office area. That front room is used as kind of the classroom, it has the tables and the chairs, the Chromebook cart, the smart board, et cetera, where a lot of the instruction takes place. In this, the back room is what we, we turned it into a maker space. And what a maker space is, it's kind of a big buzzword, but it's a, it's a, a place where kids share. So when we say share, they share everything, from curiosity to ideas, they share knowledge, they share materials, they share resources, they share the glue guns, the drills, I mean, they share everything, whatever's there, they're sharing. And they're sharing in the design process, et cetera. So we've got the back walls full of shelves, they've been maxed out already, we're, we're going to get, you know, more totes, et cetera. So the space has worked out beautifully, it has been perfect. We, for the future, we've talked about robotics, so we have a very basic and we have a very advanced, so we're looking for something in the middle to kind of have a better continuation of aligning that curriculum specifically. We are looking at, and if not for this next year, for the year after, because they are quite expensive, is a drone unit, for lack of a better word, it's just drones, something that would be, it's popular, it's new, it's fresh, it's fun, and it requires a lot of creativity and a lot of engineering, a lot of science. They'll use the coding. They'll use their flight and aerodynamics knowledge that they, sixth grade's already acquired from this year, so that can take them to the next level. But it is expensive, so we're looking for, how are we going to pay for that? And if we can't implement it and learn it fast enough for this upcoming school year, it's in the forefront for the year after that. So just know that that's something that we're really looking hard at. Another thing we would like to talk about really, really quickly is the outreach. The kids have loved it, the teachers, I think, have really enjoyed it. When they first, after the first couple of times that she was in the classroom, the teachers were like, oh, maybe I can do this. So they have started to research and find their own things that they can implement into the classroom, which then leads us to the question of, what can we do that's the most impactful? Will it still be her going out into the classroom, which we would like to do, but as we add more grade levels, that's less time for each classroom. So we're trying to figure out how to balance that out, or would it be where she's somewhat maybe of an instructional coach, where she's helping the teachers to do those activities themselves in the classroom, so that they have longer with each activity, so they get to do them more often? We don't know the answer yet, but that's what we're, that's what our outreach plan is. And then the last thing is, when we created and modeled this academy, we modeled it after Warren County's two-twelve academy. And we are meeting with those teachers two weeks from today, I think? The thirty-first? To share ideas, to share materials, maybe even our kids. I would love to see the kids. To collaborate, so we've got lots of ideas, it's just a matter of getting them all down on paper and done, and we've had a very successful school year, we think. You want to add anything else? Yes, the only thing I want to add is I just felt that the parent support was wonderful. I tell them that, to tell the kiddos, if it wasn't for them, a lot of things in that maker space wouldn't be there, all the recyclables, and we've kind of taken that to a lesson itself, look how much we're throwing away, and they're saving it, and they'll drop it by the door. I get all kinds of things, it's wonderful, and that's where all the totes have come from and organized it all, and I even let them kind of help me figure out how to make the space, which would be useful for them, since they're the ones using it. Also, the students, we had student surveys, parent surveys. The student surveys were wonderful, they, they want to come more often, can I come to STEAM every day? Can you just, can this just be our classroom, kind of a thing? So wonderful, just good news all around, teachers, parents, students, I think it was a great year, I'm excited for next year. Great things to come.
As you can see, things are going very well. And I want to compliment you all, listen, they've got volumes of more information to share with us, but they did a great job of condensing this into.
We could talk about that.
Do you all have any questions for them, anything about the?
I attended your all's open house.
Yes, very successful.
And it was amazing how they had one, one thing to accomplish, one task to accomplish, in the many different ways and things they used to come out with the, with the same result. It was just, and the Sudoku was too difficult.
It's a safe place to fail, Mr. Rush.
But there were, no doubt, there were, no doubt, how many parents there? And when the parents come, the children are going to do well, and that's to your all's credit.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. In your board notes, I mentioned to you about the robotics program, they're, they're doing a little bit different robotics, but this could eventually end up feeding into the system that I explained to you in the board notes, so. And what grades do you cover right now?
Four, fifth, sixth, and seventh for the pull-out, come out of the classroom. And then outreach for this past year was preschool, K one, two, and every student from preschool was second.
And just to kind of complete the piece of the puzzle, the eighth grade has the, helping with the.
Pre-AP.
Yeah, pre-AP, thank you. And then our high school, of course, we have a good number, average year, twelve, thirteen AP courses that they can take at the high school. So we're trying to reach every child from three-year-old all the way up to twelfth grade and an extension to normal learning.
I'm curious, have you identified any children that have, that are not already identified? Yes, as, yeah. So are you asking, are there students in the pull-out who are not gifted? Is that what you're asking? Yes, or when you go into the outreach that you've identified? Oh, yes, yes. Oh, yes. Yeah, that's pretty exciting. I want to be in Ms. Hart's class, I want to be in the academy. They already talk about coming. The enthusiasm has, that seed has been planted. The amount of community, and then. Ms. Hart. That's wonderful.
You all are planning on starting your own school over there?
No.
Charter school? You said the C-word.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much, appreciate everything. Sir, that does complete the superintendent's report.
Okay, next is recognition of visitors. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the board at this time? Okay, moving right along. Next item is Green Dot Program Presentation.
Listen, probably back in two thousand fifteen, if I recall correctly, the, all the superintendents in the area, Betlam, Mr. Hamilton, and then Dr. World, Nelson County, and myself, we were invited to come to Flagey and speak with some staff about a program called Green Dot. And what we learned about Green Dot, it's a, it's a program that helps high school and college-age students learn to reduce violence in their school communities. And they do this through leadership skills. We were all excited to hear how this program worked and the possibility of a grant that would allow us to have this program in our three school systems, and so we were immediately in. And so obviously, what you're going to see today, we began the program in two thousand fifteen, sixteen, and then sixteen, seventeen was our second year, and we have one year 16, and then 16, 17 was our second year, and we have one year left, uh, with the grant, and then we have a person that is being trained in this process, that will be able to continue our, our program. But what we have with us, we have a very special person, that's what's made this program successful. Ms. Jennifer Fowler is here today, and she's going to tell us how this program works, and how we get our students to help, if you will, work with other students, to make good choices. She's gonna be sharing with us a, a good amount of data, and I'm sure she'll tell you this, but, but that data that she's sharing with us is for the entire county of Nelson, uh, the two, uh, public schools there, and our public school. Uh, so it's a, it's a view of all of us, and I think one of the things that she'll, she'll probably share with you, uh, is that the numbers, I'm just gonna leave it at that and let you have it from there, uh, but the numbers really show an extremely positive trend, and that's something that, it's great news for the entire Nelson County area. Jennifer Fowler.
Well, thank you for that introduction again, I'm Jennifer Fowler. I am the Violence Prevention Coordinator at Kentucky One, Flagey Memorial Hospital. Um, about two years ago, like you described, we received a grant from the Catholic Health Initiative to reduce violence as a public health concern in our communities. Um, so now Barstown High is one of five participating high schools in our county in the Green Dot Program. Um, we searched far and wide, and we chose this particular program for its effectiveness and its proven results. Um, the CDC actually just released a, um, study that showed a 30 to 40% reduction in sexual assault, bullying, and dating violence across Kentucky high schools. Um, now, this is a national program, it started at the collegiate level. Also, if you were entering the Air Force, this is a mandatory program in the Air Force now, and they're looking to go ahead and extend that mandatory statute in the Army as well. Um, so we know it works. So it is now our mission to kind of replicate these findings and reduce, um, these type of power-based personal violence in Barstown High School and across our county. Green Dot is really fascinating. Uh, it's a comprehensive, comprehensive approach to violence prevention, but what it does is capitalizes on peer influence, because who doesn't wanna be cool in high school, right? I mean, that's your major goal, beside your diploma. And then we also look at the bystander theory, and that's really what it's all about, because what crime statistics show us is that 75% of all violence in the U.S. has a bystander. Um, that's what we use. So instead of working with the victims, instead of working with the perpetrators, because that's really tough, and that's usually after it's happened, let's treat everyone as a bystander, because that's what we are, we're all bystanders in these types of situations. Um, so we look to engage and equip these kids, these students with practice skills, and then they can put them in their already existing relationships within the school, and their everyday activities, right? Um, so we try to assert the new norm, violence is not accepted here, and we try to get the students to implement this, right? Instead of us adults trying to, you know, tell these students how they should act or what they should do, we give them the skills to do that. So violence is not tolerated, but even more, everyone is expected to do their part. You're a part of this school, so you need to, you know, you need to do your part in this. So we're moving students past the passive agreement, because most of us are in agreement, bullying's not okay, most of students think that, they honestly do, but we need to get them into the active intervention stage. So if you see it, you've gotta say something, or you've gotta do something, and that's what we're missing. And what bystander theory also tells us is once one person does something or says something, other people kinda join in. Um, and so that's why we think it has been so successful across Kentucky. Um, the implementation process, first, we find popular opinion leaders. So we survey students, who do you respect the most? Who do you go to for advice? Who's seen as your leader in your, in your group? Um, and then we ask this, we ask the teachers the same thing about the students. So we pick the leaders of the school, but it's a little bit different, because we ask for leaders of every subset, subgroup in the school. So, cause, because what we found out is the leader of the football team doesn't have a lot of influence over the kids that hang out at the skate park, right? And vice versa. So we wanna penetrate all subgroups, so someone has the skills and the leadership within their own group to do something if it's happening to their friends. Then we, we invite all those students that we've identified for a one-day training, we do it in here, it's really loud and robust, and I feel sorry for everybody that, and the other, and the other rooms, but we educate them on the effects of violence, we give them statistics, um, people share personal stories of things they've gone through, um, and then we help them identify potential high-risk situations. What does it look like when this is happening to somebody? What does it look like afterwards? How do people usually behave once they've kinda been in one of these situations? Um, and we talk about that, then we give them actual interventions to use. So we tell them, you know, you were chosen for your, your coolness, so we don't wanna change that, so based on your personality, we'll give you a couple options, and then let's practice those ones that you would probably typically do. So that's direct, I directly talk to the victim, I might directly talk to the bully, um, delegate, I just find somebody else, my loud, crazy friend that will say something, because she always says every, you know, so then you can delegate to her, or you can distract, that's, that's for my cut-ups, um, that just kind of, um, throw something silly out into the mix to kind of de-escalate the situation, especially social media, it's very tough for kids to intervene on social media, because they know they're gonna get it all right back on them. So throw a picture of a cat up in, you know, in the middle of your comments, everybody's like, what? And it distracts away from what's going on. Um, and these are green dots. Every time we do something instead of nothing is a green dot, right? Um, and we also teach the proactive methods, not just the reactive method. So, again, we're using the power of those peer influence of those students, so if you see kids with a Green Dot shirt on, that's a green dot. You're letting the other people know that Green Dot is your team, just like you at K, U of L, right? Every time that you do anything and let people know that you don't think violence is okay, and you're the leader of your little group, they all kind of begin to do what you do. So, all those type of things, we have found, have led to a reduction in violence. Um, recently, you may have seen in the newspaper, um, a couple of the Barstown students actually held a flag football tournament here at Barstown High School, and all the different high schools showed up, um, to participate. Um, we had probably about 200 people, um, out at the football field, and they all just, you know, they didn't talk a lot about violence prevention, but they let each other know that they believe in it, you know? Um, so it's, it's really important for us to keep that level of their coolness so it works, you know, so we don't overexert it, we let them kind of manage how it's implemented. Um, so that sounds all nice and good, but if you're anything like me, is it working? Right? Um, it is, thank goodness, right? Um, so using the Kentucky Incentives for Prevention Survey that's done with the 10th and 12th graders every other year, we have found, as the state trends of violence have increased, our school trends are decreasing. Um, bullying, um, when we asked kids when the, the 10th and 12th graders, have they been bullied on school property? Actually, they, we have started at a lower percentage than the state trend, which is also good to know, right? We started out at 15.5 at our baseline, statewide, and the same year started at 18.35%. We saw a reduction in that in cyberbullying, while the state trend showed an increase. Um, also, in school bullying policy perception, the knowledge of existence of bullying policy, ours went up by quite a few percentage points, the state trend, um, kind of went up a little bit, but not quite like we've done in our county, which is great. Um, school bullying policy perceived to be effective, ours went up, the state's decreased, the state trends decreased. Um, safety measures like verbal threatening at school, physically threatened at school, sexual assaults, you can see we all have decreased in our schools in our county, while you see, um, verbal threats and physical threats have risen across the state, sexual assault has remained the same. So again, like, uh, Mr. Holskaw had stated, we are, and we're at the end of our second year, about to go into our third and final year, but we think we have a really good sustainability plan, um, and we have some community partners that would love to continue this, and we have some real interest with some teachers, um, and the high school that would be willing to continue the program thereafter.
That's it.
Like I was at a soccer, do they wear green socks sometimes?
Yes, sometimes they do. So we'll have these student-led activities, um, we, we let the students decide what they wanna do and how they wanna kind of spread the word and just let other people know what they're doing. So yeah, sometimes it's green shirt day, or sometimes it's green sock day, um, they have little contests at school, giveaways, um, just any way that they wanna get the word out.
You'd say this is just for 10th and 12th grade?
It's for the entire high school, so each year, we train 15% of each high school in the one-day training, but then we give all of the students an overview of it. So, um, now in our second and third year, every freshman that comes in will also get the overview, and hey, you're, you're coming to this school, this is how, this is how we do things here. And we usually have students to help us talk to those freshmen, too.
Is there anything for the elementary and the middle schools?
That's what we're, I know, and that's what we're really looking at. Um, Green Dot, um, has finally just published their, their middle school findings to make sure, and they kinda have to tweak the curriculum a little bit to suit that, um, that age group. Uh, but then there's a lot, since they have had such success with this bystander theory concept, there's been a lot of other programs that have adopted this that are already ready for, for middle school and elementary school, so, I mean, that could definitely be a possibility.
Primarily, maybe, high school and college, I'm unsure.
Yes, this particular program is. And that's why we didn't start it earlier, because this is, this is what we have the statistics behind, so we wanted to make sure we, uh, we did what we said we were gonna do the first time around, right? And maybe get invited back.
It's not like the fact is not broken down by schools also.
Yes.
So that Nelson County is all schools in Nelson?
Yeah, that, well, it's Bethlehem, Thomas Nelson, Horizons, Nelson County, and Barstown High School. And everybody decided, let's, you know, let's look at the statistics as a whole.
Well, I like the part where, you know, bystanders, you know, need to own up to their part in the book.
Yes.
And sometimes they're signifiers, I mean, they wanna keep it going.
Exactly, and I know that there's this new culture about, you know, recording things, but, you know, so we have to get past this, okay, now that you have the recording, can you take this to a teacher? Can you take this somewhere? Um, you know, 'cause I don't think there's, there's some things that have organically grown within the student population, that a lot of us didn't grow up from day one with technology like they did, you know? They're kind of leading us in that, you know, and, and that fold, so it's tough, um, to give them ideas on things that they're really the experts on, right? So we have to use them in that regard.
Is there really more bullying than, I mean, when we grew up, there was bullying, but, I mean, now cyberbullying, all that stuff's a different animal, I get all that, but it's just, are we, what's symptomatic, or what's caused, is there more of it, is so, so?
You know, I, I don't think that there was a lot, you know, when I, when I studied the problem, there hasn't, there wasn't a lot of research done about it then, so it's hard to make a comparison.
We just didn't track it back then.
Yeah, we didn't track it, and, and it was handled differently, but I think the advent of the internet and these social media sites just make it completely different. When once something would happen at school, you'd have all day and all night to get over it, and only a handful of people knew, the rest were rumors. I mean, most of this is happening online, through text, that kind of thing. I mean, I think the same percentage is still in schools, which is, is very minimal, actually, but it's hard to separate those two in a kid's head, you know? What's happening with this, you know, one of their school students versus what's happening at school. Yeah, so a thousand people know. A thousand people know. So it's, it's tough, that's why we have to use them to take the lead on this, and I think that's why this program works.
Just me, I get to go through the school, get the biggest, baddest kids at the school, train them on Green Dot, give them a shirt, turn them loose.
That, I mean, that's basic, I mean, we've, we've had all kinds of students in there, there was quite a few students that were in here today, um, that were in, that are in the program, but again, we take them from all the little sections, but we got plenty of big guys in there, they're, they're doing their job, so we're happy. Well, thank you for having me, I appreciate it.
Thank you, wonderful work you're doing, um, keep it up, and we're very grateful to have you. You can see from her personality, she didn't respond to this lady, I'm telling you, and she's talking about them being loud, it's appropriately loud at the appropriate time, uh, and we, we really have come to really enjoy it here in this office, 'cause we know some good things are going on in here. Thank you for all your work, not only for our school system, but Nelson County, I mean, we have a great trend, uh, going on here, it's, it's great news for us.
I know, we just had a white-up and team vote, anybody? Let's look at that link about Kentucky schools and the Green Dot program, so, just catch them on.
Thank you so much.
Go Provo. Okay. Next item of business is Gus Bus Garage Relocation Update.
As you know, uh, we're, we talked about it a little while ago, the money's been released, and we're, uh, have been working out there now for, uh, several months, and have things well underway, and, uh, the facility from the very beginning, what it looked like, what it looks like today, that might look like the same building. So, we thought it would be appropriate to give you a virtual tour. I still want you to know that anytime you want to take an actual tour, Mr. Hood would be available, and we'd be happy to work out a time to get you out there, and a hard hat on you, and walk you through the building, uh, but today, we're gonna take a virtual tour and let you see the progress that we've made so far.
Yep, as Mr. Holskaw mentioned, I think the good news so far is how smoothly the, it has gone, and, um, you know, we, we've worked with BCD before, we worked with Mr. Tom Corbett before, um, of course, our architects, this is probably the biggest project they've taken on for us, um, to this point, uh, of, of all the construction, but everything seems to be running smoothly, so, so I'm, I'm out there daily, um, I'm pretty excited, every day I go out there, it seems like something new has, has happened, so, what I did is I've combined some pictures here that kind of gets us what it looked like when we first walked in out there, uh, to where, what it looks like today. So, I'll just, these first, uh, initial four slides, I think, are just a couple of pictures of, of the way it was. Um, a couple of things you're gonna notice is, I want you to notice, first, this is not here anymore, but all of the areas that are, um, that are down low, we have raised the floor level, which you'll be able to see here in just a second, that's a, that's been a huge thing for us. These are the bays that we're currently gonna use, but you can't see that anymore, because there's a wall that goes from the...
So those are garage doors we're seeing right now?
Yes, these are the garage doors, there's, there's five of those, five bays that we're gonna be utilizing there.
Those are facing the west?
Those are, this, yes, the, yes, Sunset Drive side, yes. Um, so then we had, this is just a, a view from where we had the, the nets in there before, for the, for the, uh, baseball and softball teams that were hitting in there, so that's, that's just a few of those. So then, they started the process, so, so now this is on the, this is on the, the Templin side, the Newcombe House side, garage doors over there, but this is one of the areas where the floor was not level, so this floor was down, uh, we raised it, we raised it up about, uh, five feet to make everything in here on one grade, so we'll be able to get much more utilization out of that, we won't have all the steps and things that, uh, that are kind of in the way. So this is, this is kind of what it looked like at, at that particular, before we started doing any point, all of these are just showing the same thing, any area that was not already at this level, we raised to that level.
Including the bays? Except on the bus side.
Yes, the, and the bays were, that was the main, that was kind of the main focus of where, these are all these bays on this side, that we raised that, that whole floor, so that was the largest, the largest section of, of concrete, kind of a, an above level that, again, you'll see in just a second, we can't, we can't see that anymore. Took a picture of this guy, because I wanna be him when I retire from this position, because he, he's riding around on like a helicopter, it's got two things underneath, uh, it's smoothing this concrete out, and he was having a big time. Uh, and the, we've got some kids that were out there, they, they, they enjoyed watching him as well, so. So this is the, all the new concrete as it was going in, this is the start of the wall right here for the, for the new bus garage, so everything on that side, uh, will be, will be a bus garage, new. Same thing here, the new area, I, I showed them one picture earlier, that this is infill now with the new concrete. So we extended from here, this was, this is the old section, not enough room really to get the bus in and be able to work on it front and back with the doors closed, so this section has been added, uh, to allow for you to get the bus in and close the door if there were weather or something outside that were. This is a, a view on the, uh, the side facing, uh, Templin Avenue, this is where the new, um, this is where the new section's going in, so you'll walk in the bus garage, you'll have some bay windows here for dispatch, um, and you'll be able to come and go and get your mail, there's also gonna be a room behind there that we can do all of the trainings, the drivers will have all of their folders, um, any, anything that we wanna give them, they can get in that area. So this is the main, the main chain. So this is the main, the main chain. So there's the wall, so the bus garage now is completely separated from the other area. That's been drywalled on one side, which you'll see here in the next couple of photos. Again, five bay area, the five bay area, these two doors are a little bit larger than the others, so we, we intend to use that end more for the buses. So yeah, this is a picture on the other side of the wall, the guy's finalizing the drywall. You know, I asked the question, you may be wondering the same thing, why didn't we just block it all the way up? It was a weight issue for the block, so we had to dig down and put a major footer in to be able to do that. So this is, this will be drywalled. It is high enough that we don't anticipate it being that, any issues with balls or anything out there if we're... This is just from up on the mezzanine, kind of looking out. Because we're putting in new lighting through the whole sit place, there's only a few lights that they've got left up. They've taken almost every light fixture down, so there's not a lot of light. And of course, the garage door kind of blinds you by, with the light coming in. Gives you an idea on where we are and what we're... We have a, we have a progress meeting tomorrow that will, will discuss how it's going. Because there's been no issues, I don't anticipate them bringing any to me tomorrow, because we kind of handle things daily, when something comes up, we try to, to fix it. So we're still looking for a mid-July finish and be able to start the move-in process, so at least for the bus garage side, so we can be ready to go first day of school.
So you say you're 70% complete?
Uh, 60 to 70, yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Oh, is that, is that building sprinkled?
Yes.
It's all sprinkled?
Okay, next item of business is approval of fiscal year 2018 tentative budget.
You know, we have three budgets, budget number two, tell you that every time we do a budget. We've got one more to do, we'll do the final one probably in August. But this is, this one is starting to get real, so the numbers are coming in. So here's what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna talk about the revenue side of, of the budget, and I'm gonna talk about the expenditure side of the budget, and then we'll answer any questions. You have a, a number of pages there, a document that we've worked very hard to put together. I think I've talked with you since our last meeting, and we put a lot of time, a lot of effort into this budget. We want to get this one, just like we do all of them, correct. But this one's been a little more difficult for the things that we're gonna be proposing to you, because we've had to work really hard on it. So I come to you today with great confidence as I, as I share this with you. First of all, our entire budget, we're looking at a tentative budget overall for $33,172,203. Our Fund One out of that will be $24,891,923. So how do we make up the revenue side? In looking at this, we're projecting our, our, our SEEK money and our grants, the net general fund, SEEK fund is going to increase by $153,571 into 2017, 18, we call that forecast, based on what they project. So we'll get what we had last year plus this amount, is what we're trying to say here. We'll get a, we'll get a final, keep in mind, we'll get final numbers in September. And it's always a little bit tricky, you have to go on forecasts, which you have to build it on. But all in all, Tracy has worked very hard with the folks at the department, and sometimes when she says, okay, well, you say this is, can you give me a projection on how much it's gonna decrease or increase? And so she's pretty good at that, so, so we're looking at, at pretty real numbers. The second part of the budget, when it comes to revenue, is your own local contribution that you make. The, this budget includes a 4% increase of income over the previous year. When we look at what our PVA has projected for taxable income this particular year, real estate, the value is $859,814,867. Has an increase of $41,632.96 over 2016, and that's good news, that's, that's, that's good news. It has another piece to it though, in addition to the increase of value of $41 million, we also have $18 million worth of new property that will be included on the assessment. So what that does for you, without getting real technical about it, when you talk about a 4% increase of revenue, it spreads it out over, over more property and more value. So hopefully, it will be a less tax rate for an individual. We do have some news on our capital outlay funds and our unused bonding potential. You know, we've been able to just roll that into Fund One, we've used that in the past. There have been some changes, but they're not going to affect us greatly. In the capital outlay, that money's set aside for us to be able to purchase insurance, things like new buses with the KISTA program. If you have an HVAC go out or a roof replacement, you can use your capital outlay for those, and also you can use them for utilities. So even though we're restricted coming up, that change, it used to be where you could just roll it in and use it, now we're gonna be restricted for those particular areas. It's not gonna, it's not gonna be a huge effect, because we'll have plenty of utilities and things that we can use our capital outlay on. And then also, just refresh your memory a little bit on the unused bonding potential. Some of that is not unused anymore, some of that will be used now. We have a new bond of 1.2 million on a bus garage relocation that we'll, we'll start paying on. So some of that will change on the revenue side. So after all's said and done, we should have a beginning balance, starting with the new year rolling over from this year, when all's said and done, should be about $1.5 million. So when you add all that up, that makes the revenue side of the budget in general terms. Let's talk about the expenditure side now. If, in the end, things need to come up to a balance, and so I, I feel very confident, as I said earlier, about sharing this with you. We look at the expenditure side, our debt service schedule for KISTA bonds, obligations, financing in the bus, in the bus purchase that we're, that we're scheduled for, those things are, have been budgeted, and we will be prepared for those. You can see some numbers that will reflect those expenditures. Also, as I've discussed with you on numerous occasions, and also in the treasurer's report, we do have an increase this year in our workers' compensation. It's projected about a $41,000 increase in, in the workers' comp. This budget also includes a 2% salary increase for all of our employees in our school district beginning the next school year. And just take a moment and expand on, expand on this just a little bit. I think from an academic, academic standpoint, our student achievement in our district has drastically improved in the past year, according to the state assessment results. I don't think there's been a time that our, our staff has not been more deserving than it is right now to have this raised. You as a board, and we as a finance department and administrative staff, we've worked very hard to nurture this budget over the past few years, to put us in a position to where we are today, to be able to make this recommendation to you. So I want you to know that we're giving careful consideration to our expenses. We're not sacrificing any of our programs by doing this. We're leaving ourselves in a good position for future budgets when we're faced with those. The revenue is there, and we work very hard at controlling costs. There's always, it's not just about revenue, it's about looking at the, the cost side. We want to, we want to reduce costs where we can, but not sacrifice programs. It's so important that we emphasize that. I think also, it's important to mention that this, this salary increase, it puts us in a position to where we can continue to recruit and retain the best educators in the area. And I think it goes without saying, our community and our students deserve it. So with that being said, the final item of, of the agenda is that, after all the revenue and expenses are calculated and we come up with a total here, we end up with a contingency of $732,301. The question there, that is a 3% contingency fund that we have, the state requires a 2%. It, this board has been, a board that has placed the money that they receive each year into the children that they have in that same year. We operate on a razor-thin contingency, and I commend you for that, and I think you're making a good decision here. And the final thing I want to reiterate is that I'm confident that this is a solid budget, and is one that we will be able to carry on in future years as well. So at this point, what I'd like to do is ask, open this floor for discussion, see if you have any comments or any concerns or questions, and myself, and I will put Tracy on notice that she has worked very hard with me on this budget, and we'll, we'll answer your questions together if you have some.
I have one question. The capital outlay funds are restricted, and I kind of missed out on one of them. You said KISTA roof replacement, you told me...
Well, yeah, on, on the capital outlay, those, those things can be used for, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I'm asking for...
Insurance, it can be spent on insurance. Usually it's kind of a building-related kind of items. So you have a, a roof or HVAC go out, it's money, it's an emergency fund for that. And then we have utilities, you're permitted to use it for that as well.
And the bus?
And, and the, well, the KISTA is more the debt service, unused bonding funds.
Well, I'm glad they discovered the roof.
Yes. We are too.
Any more questions? Comment? Did I hear a motion to approve the fiscal budget 2018, excuse me, tentative budget for fiscal year 2018?
Some move?
Second?
Second.
Discussion being done, all those in favor sitting about to say aye? Opposed or none?
Thank you, and I will let our employees know as soon as possible, they will be excited.
Next item, approval of independent auditors contract for fiscal year 2016, 17.
The independent audit is what we... Is, are you ready?
Yes, yes, sir.
This is our auditors that come in and do our finance. Last month, you will recall, we approved Ms. Pendegras, she's, not to be confused, an additional piece of our audit, a small piece of this. This is a, a audit that we do. The compensation for Smith and Company would be $12,000. It is possible that if there are things discovered a long way, and it does require additional work, that they can charge up to 10% more. But right now, I think this past year, it was $12,000 a year before, and they came in at 12 again. We kind of anticipate that unless it's a justified reason. It can only go up 10%, or $1,000, whichever is less. And I will say that we have been pleased with their work. One of the things that we like a lot about this audit company is that they bring to the table not only findings, but also suggestions, if you will, somewhat of a program that we can implement to help us. And you've noticed that several times, we've got our, our findings down to almost nothing now, and that's due to find it...
Fix it.
Give us some suggestions on how to do better, and then we take those suggestions and do that. And so best, best accounting practices, okay.
Make a motion to approve an independent auditors contract fiscal year 2016, 2017?
Second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor sitting about to say aye?
Aye.
Opposed or none? Next item, approval of mental health and behavioral health services agreements.
We have two of those that we're going to present to you today. Typically, we do this in midsummer, but due to the timing of the wordage of the contract, we'll need to do these in spring, and so Mr. Boss is gonna make that presentation at this time.
Thank you guys for having me today. Every year, if you don't know, Mr. Robby, just take one and pass it down. Coming to you guys to get, to get our mental health contract services approved for the coming school year. Historically, the big player that you're probably familiar with has been Community Care. Every year, we get our Community Care contract. Last year, we also had Physicians to Children was approved by the board to come in and do, also do mental health counseling. For a couple of different reasons, Physicians to Children will no longer be able to offer those services in our community next school year, and they've recommended that Astra Behavioral Health pick up the caseload of students that they were seeing. So Astra has approached us with an interest in doing the same thing that Community Care is doing, and that the Physicians to Children has done for us, and that is just come to school and provide in-school mental health therapy for our students. I went through and just pulled out a little bit of information for, of what they are, that each organization's gonna offer us, should you approve for the next school year. The two main pieces that we get from Community Care for in-school purposes are school-based therapy, which is them providing their mental health therapist to come in and see kids during the school day, and also impact. Impact is basically case management services. So the impact worker works with the family, and also works with the school staff to kind of make sure that the recommendations are being followed on all ends, to provide better services for the child both in and outside of school. And there's some, some language there, you guys are welcome to read at your leisure. And then Astra is doing the therapeutic services as well, that in-school mental health. They have, they do psychological, psychosocial assessments, diagnosing, and individual therapy. And they're also willing to offer us psychological, or, I'm sorry, psychiatric services. And that would mean if you have a student that's taking some medication for a certain condition, they are willing to see that student, of course, if the parents are okay with that, but also make appointments for here at school during the school day. One of the big problems we're finding is that a student may be on some medication, but there's not a lot of follow-through with the, with the family to make sure that continues to get filled, to make sure it comes to school, et cetera. So they're willing to work with our principals and find the certain days that work for certain families, and instead of driving down to their clinic, which is right over by Anytime Fitness and Parkway Baptist Church, they could come up to school and, and do an appointment right there onsite. And then as well as the case management piece that Community Care also offers. The, the one reason we look at two different organizations to provide these services is, Community Care will only accept Medicaid recipients. Whereas Astra can accept Medicaid as well as private insurance, because we have a lot of students that need, need these services that aren't necessarily Medicaid recipients. So we're, we have to go with an outside, non-government-funded entity, if that makes sense, to get those services. Does anyone have any questions about either of these organizations?
Our two on-staff psychologists, what, how do they integrate into this?
Well, we have two school psychologists, we have Mrs. Megan Andrew and Jennifer Ballard, and they do more, mostly just our psychological testing to determine whether or not a student's eligible for a disability. They don't necessarily provide mental health counseling. We do have Brooke Ballard and Josh Gabbert, who are LCSWs that, that are on our payroll, that see certain students that need it more because the IEP team has determined they need it, more as a related service. So these students, those are typically students that have already qualified for a certain disability, and it's added on to their education plan as a related service. Whereas these students that are being seen by these organizations are, most of the time, students that have not been identified as having a disability. So just asking for your all's approval for these two, two companies.
Very motion to approve?
Some move?
Second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor sitting about to say aye?
Aye.
Opposed or none?
I do have one question before you go. What is, it didn't have anything to do with the vote. What do you think the impact is gonna be with maybe possible reduction in Medicaid expansion?
I'm, I'm a little nervous about it for a couple of reasons. One, for our own school-based billing program. You know, as, as a district, we brought in several thousand dollars over the course of the last several years through Medicaid billing. I'm particularly worried about it for our special needs population in school and outside of school. Because one, one of the big programs that I see that's gonna be affected is the Michelle P. waiver program, which is not necessarily direct, directly affect our students here at school, but those could be used to get outside therapy services. As well as, you know, I heard Mr. Hostal mention a piece of equipment that we purchased for a young lady, relatively expensive. Well, right now, all I have to do is fill out some paperwork, submit that under her Medicaid number to the organization that we contract with as a district to provide our billing for those services. And we get reimbursed somewhere between 70 to 80%. So as a district, if something, if something were to change... So as a district, if something, if something were to change with our current Medicaid reimbursement program, instead of getting a 78, 80% of that reimbursed for a child, we're gonna still have to provide that equipment, but without receiving the reimbursement. So hopefully, it doesn't come to that. I know there's a lot of lobbying going on right now by KSBA and other organizations that work with schools to make sure our legislators understand how that could impact our children, and hopefully, they make decisions that are gonna be good for kids. So, all right, thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
So our next item is approval of the NCSBS copier slash printer lease agreements.
All right, I'm bringing you something, Dave, that almost never happens. We're going into a new agreement, and it's gonna cost less. So we get around, we're gonna save, and the new copying of lease, we're gonna save about $250 a month, but what I'm really excited about is that we're, the new technology, all of the printers will be connected to each other, and so when the printer is low on whatever it needs, it tells the company directly, and then the company ships us what we need for it. So we won't have closets full of supplies that we think we need, and that we're putting all these under the same brand also, because we, right now, we have a lot of brands out in the schools, and sometimes the printer quits working, and we got a closet full of supplies. So we're gonna save money monthly, and then we're gonna save money in supplies in the long run, and be managed all under one umbrella with new technology and apps. Just for a small example, very quickly, is that a lot of times, we'll print something, it'll go to the printer, and it'll print out, and then it may sit there or whatever, but now, under the new technology, it'll be printed, it'll be sent to the printer, you won't print it out until you actually need it and go to it, and then if you get to the printer and didn't need it anymore, you just cancel it. So we didn't run off all those pieces of paper that we might not have actually needed. So this is, this contract is a win-win-win all the way around, which, like I say, I'm pretty excited about it. We've been working on it for about a year now, and it costs less. It's amazing to me that it does, but it does, and so we're very happy to bring this to you.
Mr. Stone, how many copies do we make a year?
Well, that's a good question. We make a lot. You know, we, you hear a lot about talking about going paperless. It's impossible. We are pretty consistent, you know, there's, it's about, I hate telling you this number, but it's about 400,000 a month, somewhere in that neighborhood, which is a lot, but it's pretty average from what I find out around the, around the school districts that we work with, with this company. But one of the things you do too, is the new technology will send it to be double-sided, if it can be double-sided, you don't have to, you don't have to pick that, it'll do it automatically for you. We're gonna consolidate all of our color printers, because obviously, color costs more. So we're gonna try to rein this in a little bit, but we're pretty typical of what everybody else does. So the people that tell you it's going all paperless, I wanna see it before it, that it actually happens.
More than that.
Well, that's, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Stone.
Thank you.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the copy release?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor sitting about to say aye?
Aye.
Opposed or none? Next is approval travel authorization.
Well, you will see, you had three of those in your electronic packet, and I placed one at your place there today. Hopefully, you'll find that. It has a note on the top. It's a late addition, so I hope that you will consider that, if there were some reason or another got left out of the packet, but if it's your wishes, we'll include that in this group. I'll let you decide that when you do your motion. But to present it, it's an overnight trip. We have two of our folks that were just here, officers in FBLA going to this trip in Hardensburg. This is an annual trip. We go there on June 5th through the 9th. I think everything's in good order there, chaperones and things that they need. Then we had our Renaissance trip for the middle school. It would be to Atlantis Water Park, takes place on May the 31st, and looks like the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. One of them's on June 1st, sixth grade's on June 1st. And it is a, as I said, out of state, Clarksville, Indiana, about, and there'll be 150 students involved in it, ratio about 15 to 1. Again, things appear to be in good order on that one. Trip number three is a overnight trip for our girls' basketball program. They will be traveling to Transylvania this summer for a basketball camp. It'll be 33 students going June 16th through the 19th, 8 to 1 chaperone. And then the final trip is, we refer to as a trifecta. We have an out-of-state overnight and a commercial travel. Be going to Daytona for a Christmas tournament in December. There's 33 students going, girls' basketball team again, 8 to 1 chaperones, and all of these are funded by their friends of, or the team or the club itself.
I make a motion to approve the travel authorizations as presented, including the paper copy.
Okay, second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor sitting about to say aye?
Aye.
Opposed or none? Thank you, Mr. Stone. Next item is personal personnel resignations, retirements.
Just make you aware of that. It's that time of year where we have some folks that you can kind of see in the list of resignations, they're changing. Some of them are not coaching particular positions or things of that nature, for the most part. A list there, you can review those. Then on one retirement that I want to share with you, Chris Drury, our maintenance supervisor, he's been here for 26 years, working with us and has done outstanding work. We've been very, very pleased to have him, and very fortunate to have him with his knowledge. So I did just wanna call his name to your attention, and he'll be retiring after 26 years on July 1st.
The stipends that we provide for our coaching target align with everyone else's?
Uh...
I mean, does it come down to being a matter of money, or generally not, just a matter of time?
Well, for the most part, we pay more than most.
Okay.
But, you know, there's, there's certain, we have the major minor, and there's some in there that do vary some, but I think, I think we usually address those as we go. If, you know, these resignations, I haven't heard anyone say anything about being...
I'm just curious.
Paying too little or anything of that nature, but that could be something we could look at. But it seems like, you know, it usually gets brought to my attention somewhere by the athletic director between now and July, and it gets a little bump here, a little bump there, kind of thing. All right?
Next item is approval of leave of absence request.
We have one family medical leave act in here. Ms. Amber Pennington, she is recovering from knee surgery and will need to be out from mid-April up through, looks like possibly into the next, the remainder of the school year, excuse me. So that's, I need to get your approval on that.
Do I hear a motion to approve leave of absence as requested?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor sitting about to say aye?
Aye.
Opposed or none? Including our packet is the site-based council minutes. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor sitting about to say aye?
Aye.
Opposed or none?